March 27, 2023 at 6:30 PM. If you would please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience this evening who has audio or video recording? If you would just indicate, raise your hand or such. And I see none. Thank you. Selectmen's comments and announcements, Mr. Ward.
Madam Chair, I'd like to publicly thank all the folks who came forward to be candidates for our election in May. We have three candidates now officially for one seat on the Board of Selectmen, three candidates for two seats on the School Committee, and we have one candidate for two seats on the Board of Health. One of those on the Board of Health will be someone who writes their names in many times. So it'll be a write-in, and we have one candidate for Rural Housing Authority. So I just want to thank them for stepping forward and making this a competitive race on May 1st.
Thank you very much. Mrs. LaPointe.
I don't at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to thank Keith Kent, who previously was on the Board of Health and has recently stepped down. And he served, I think, for five years or more and did an outstanding job for the Board of Health. He also does a lot of work for the town of Winchandon on his own time. And knowing that he has stepped down, I don't think we publicly thanked him for his service, and I do. And then I know that we reached out to people to send a letter of interest if they wanted to serve on the Board of Health on that empty seat. And I don't think we picked a date certain to send that letter in by.
Yeah.
Okay, so we need to set a date certain for?
I would think so, that anybody who's interested, if we give them a month, and then we can go through the letters of interest at that time.
Okay.
But if we just leave it open-ended, then nobody's going to submit a letter because they don't know.
Work better under pressure.
Usually.
Yeah.
March 22 was the date to get the request in.
We did give a date certain?
Gave a date, March 22 on the what was on the website.
So knowing that it's March 23, has anybody submitted a letter of interest?
I think today's the 27th.
I can answer that. We did get one verbally, and then they sent an email, and then we did get one from the website. So they're meeting on April 3, Board of Health, and they're going to make their recommendation. And then they'll get together with the Board of Selectmen to appoint them until the remainder of the term.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, very good. Thank you. I myself don't have anything at the moment. Public comments and announcements this evening? Anyone wishing to come forward? Seeing and hearing none. We have no public hearings this evening. Appointments and resignations. Board of Registrar appointment. Donna Spellman, a familiar name, I like to see, looking to be appointed to the Board of Registars. Town Clerk does give her a recommendation. This would be for a term expiring 3/31/26. So she is looking to continue with the Board of Registrar. Any questions or comments from the Board?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Anderson.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Donna Spellman to the Board of Registars with a term that will be expiring on 3/31/2026.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 And the Chair votes aye.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Solzback.
I'm sorry for interrupting.
No, it's fine.
4.2 Agricultural Commission is actually my appointment, and it snuck in there, so please feel free to pass over.
Thank you very much. Do you have a motion to pass over 4.2?
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 And the Chair votes aye. 4.3, we have some appointments to the newly formed Parks and Recreation Commission, combining the two separate ones into one. We have Andrew Bovee, who would be appointed to a three-year term, expiring 3/30, I'm sorry, 6/30/2025. Do you want to take these individually or as a group?
I think as a group would be fine, but I'm just questioning how they came about these appointments. Were there other people that were interested? I have no idea how they came up these appointments.
Anyone want to speak to that?
If I could, we can, I'll speak to that, but also I just wanted to add a note as well that the newly or freshly formed Parks and Rec Committee as a result of the recent special town meeting still technically needs to be certified by the state. So any appointments made this evening would be contingent upon certification of the existence of that committee from the state.
Thank you.
And then in terms of if anybody else has reached out, I personally have not seen anybody else. But I don't know if maybe the Rec Committee or Parks and Rec Committee or whatever you technically are in your current state of limbo, if you've received any other input.
We have not received any others at this time. There is one other person who I spoke with today that is interested, but is not obviously on this list today.
Okay. Thank you. So it would be Andrew Bovee, three-year term, expiring 6/30/2025. Dawn Higgins, a two-year term, expiring 6/30/2024. Deborah Kane, two-year term, expiring 6/30/2024. Deborah Bradley, a three-year term, to expire 6/30/2025. And then two student appointments. Emily Bradley for a one-year term, expires, expiring 6/30/2023. And then she will be up for renewal for FY '24. And then also Emily Crowdo, a student, for a one-year term to expire 6/30/2023. And again, if she wishes to be renewed to the appointment in June for the FY '24 year.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
Couple of questions.
Yes.
So right now we have six members of a nine-member board, right? Because we could have nine and we've only got six.
Correct.
And this doesn't take effect until the Attorney General gives the okay.
Officially, yes.
So I notice you're meeting tomorrow night.
I amended that. I spoke with our town clerk, and we'll be meeting tomorrow night as the Recreation Commission that was previously formed.
Okay, so these people won't be meeting as that group tomorrow night? Unless they're all, all six of these are on that committee?
So one of them is from the Winchandon Parks Committee, the Community Park Committee, so they would not, they're probably still going to come, but they're not going to vote because they're not part of that committee.
Okay.
And then the others are on Recreation, and we'll use it that way, due to the complexity of everything that happened.
That was a confusion because I went, I went to the calendar and saw that it said the Parks and Recreation Commission was meeting tomorrow night.
Yeah, and I changed that to just Recreation Commission. I made it amended agenda today. Yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of overlapping.
Yes.
Sure. Any other questions, comments from the Board?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Anderson.
I move to appoint Andrew Bovee, Dawn Higgins, Deborah Kane, Deborah Bradley, Emily Bradley, and Emily Crowdo to the newly formed Parks and Recreation Commission appointments.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Will the maker of the motion in the second approve adding, pending the Attorney General's approval?
Pending the Attorney General's.
To the motion in the second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? And seeing and hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. Crowdo. Okay, 5.1 Camelot Farms Lodging House License Extension. Who wants to speak to this one?
I can take that one. The gentleman, the manager is unable to attend tonight. He had work, and the owner's out of the country. They did make, to date since January, when we renewed it for just a three-month period. This does expire March 31st. They have made $2,800 in their back taxes. I think they currently owe $13,000. They did indicate they're going to try to make a payment of $1,000 per month. So at this time, we're suggesting maybe doing an extension until June 30th and revisiting this again in three months.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the Board?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions with this because this is not new. We've dealt with this 2021. It's here again. Back in 2022, when they came before the Board, they were also behind in their water bill by 3,000-something. Is their water bill up to date today?
I did check with the treasurer's collector, and they just told me it was back taxes. They looked on there, but I will double-check on the water sewer as well.
I really, I really, it's sort of a troubling thing because it seems to be a consistent thing, but yet because it's senior housing, it puts you in this predicament of you don't want to shut down someplace that seniors are going to. I do have real problem in understanding how they can continuously be underserved when we have an aging community and we have limited housing for seniors in the town of Winchandon. It just, it's amazing to me that they can't fill those spots. But anyway, those are, my question was basically, is the water bill caught up? Because that was also way behind the last time we looked at this.
Is this senior housing or veterans' housing?
It's senior, but they also have veterans there. But it is listed as a senior housing.
Okay, so it does fall under both categories. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. LaPointe.
How many residents currently live there and can live there?
I do, I do not know their capacity offhand.
I know that they have a few vacancies, and they're working with an outside agency. They're meeting with them, I believe, tomorrow. And those vacancies will be possibly filled, so they feel like their income level will go up, and they'll be able to pay off a little bit more in a more timely fashion.
Yeah, I see the letter from the, from the house manager about that. Any further questions, comments?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
I would just stress that if we move this to give them a license extension to June 30, that we stress to them that they need to be here next time. Because we do have questions, and they can answer those questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ward.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. LaPointe.
Sorry. And I apologize, my tablet's dead. I didn't realize, so I can't look at the Dropbox. When does this license expire?
March 31st.
So we can't postpone it to the next meeting?
No.
We renewed it for three months on January 1st, just to make sure they'd catch up. Where they didn't make a payment, we recommended that we do it another three months and assess the situation at that time.
I feel like they're making forward progress, and so that's a positive.
Slow forward progress. If they weren't paying anything, I think it would be a little bit of a different situation. I agree with Mr. Ward that it has been going on, and we'd hope to see that they, they're able to get their numbers up. But in the meantime, here we are this evening.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Anderson.
I move the Board to approve the Lodging House License Extension for Temacetta Real Estate, Inc., doing business as Camelot Farms, located at 50 Old Center through June 30, 2023.
I'll second.
Thank you. Made and seconded to approve another three-month extension. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 And the Chair votes aye. Thank you for your work on that, Mary.
Yeah, no problem.
Next, we have a common vitula license. The next three. Make yourself at home. Good evening. First up is the common vitulas license for Bullspit Brewing Company. This is for outdoor seating, a hospitality area, food service via their mobile food truck. And this would be any set period of time or just for the season?
Yeah, this would probably, wow.
I'm sorry. For the record, please state your names.
All right, James Hunt, Bullspit Brewing Company.
Thank you.
Liz Bowwell, Bullspit Brewing Company?
Thank you. Okay.
So the common vic would be basically for the season that we're open on that location. Yep.
Okay. Do you have an anticipated start date?
We are going for licensing next month, so we're hoping in May. I would hope sometime in May we get it back from the state and are good to go. And then we usually run through as far as we can. So we, sometimes we've made it to mid-November.
Sure.
So, yeah.
Thank you. Fee has been paid. Now, I do not see any comments from department heads. Questions, comments from the Board?
I think I have some questions.
Mrs. Anderson.
Due to, you know, issues with the building and the creation of that, so this is all going to be going on outside, correct?
Correct.
And you're requesting Thursday through Sunday, basic permits for, for everything? And I guess I'm just trying to anticipate maybe some problems with noise being right on the water, and it'll carry, I'm assuming? And, you know, should there be any complaints? There's not a whole lot of neighbors near you, which is fortunate, but it will go across the water pretty easily.
Noise for?
Like music.
The, oh, the, is that entertainment?
I'm just looking at all of them.
Oh, okay.
If you're going to sit there and eat and drink and listen, you want to listen to music.
Yeah, so we had, we know, we operated last year out there with our live music on Saturdays and Sundays, and we don't anticipate having live music on Thursdays or Fridays in the immediate. We're going to stick with our Saturdays and Sundays. We did much better, I think, in that location, noise-wise, than we did when we were on Central Street. We didn't get nearly the amount of concerns about noise or noise traveling. We ended up having a great relationship with a lot of our neighbors down there, so. I don't see a concern. I, and, but, you know, we're always open in communicating with the town manager and his staff about our weekends, and have you heard anything? And we're in regular communication with the police department and their staff, so. We like to keep a close, close eye on it because we don't want it to ever escalate to an issue. We like to handle it as it happens.
Was there anything else, Barbara?
I don't know. Are you doing anything about bugs? That was my first thought when I was kind of buggy down there.
It is. I think this spring, we weren't open in the spring down there last year. We were only open in the fall, so I think it should be interesting. I don't, we haven't even tackled that issue yet.
Oh.
I'm sure.
That's my concern. I'm on the bike trail all the time, and it's buggy.
It's buggy, yeah. I'm sure, yeah. Right on the water.
We've had great success with Mosquito Squad.
Yeah. It is also very breezy down there.
Bad for birds.
It's very breezy down there, so we're hoping that that helps. There always seems to be a constant small breeze, so we're hoping that helps us.
Blow the mosquitoes over to the neighbors.
Yep, yep.
Anything further?
No, I don't think so.
Are we still just dealing with the first one?
Yes, at the moment we have before us the common vic license, vitulas license. If there's no further questions, comments, we'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
I move the Board to approve common vitula license Bullspit Brewing Company for Summer Drive as presented this evening.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next also for Bullspit, the mobile food vendor permit. Similar situation. Also move locations around town for special events. I do see that you've been in contact with the Board of Health.
Yeah, I've been in contact with Mr. Abair, and he gave me a punch list of things to get done, and we're working on getting those, and this is one of those items we had to do, so.
Thank you. What type of food?
When we operated the food truck in 2020 out in Lancaster, we had, we used a lot of our meats from our farm, which was nice, so a lot of grass-fed options. We had a nice pork taco that was very successful. Of course, our eight-ounce hamburger, grass-fed burger, was a massive hit. Our pulled pork sandwiches.
Nice.
But we also are going to, we do some farm-made meatballs that are a big success, so our meatball subs are really good. So we'll probably throw those on, and.
Very good.
We're looking at some other creative ideas to have on there. Something different outside of what you can get in town already was kind of the thought process there.
Sure. Nice. Thank you. Questions, comments from the Board?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
So maybe the town manager can answer this. This is a mobile food vendor to be able to use that truck. But going to different locations around town, would they still have to come before the Board to be at a particular event or location?
So, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hunt, but you guys aren't intending to go anywhere else in town, right? You're going to be parked down at Four Summer Drive?
Yeah, we, you know, it's, that's the majority of the time. I think we did commit to moving it for Fall Fest and then possibly the Food Truck Fest. But those are the only other two commitments in town that we've had. Other than that, it's going to be at our location.
So I would say if it's, if it's an occasion involving a different event, they would come before the Board?
Would, like, I'm thinking about, we've had, you know, food truck events. And is, and I don't remember, did all the individual food truck people come for a permit? Or did the event group that was putting on the event?
The latter.
Would, would, they would have to just make sure, they were the ones responsible for making sure that everybody was licensed?
Correct. So last year I did all the event permits, and then I followed up with Jim and the Board of Health to make sure that everybody had gotten their licenses and through him. And they all went through him, and they didn't have to come before Board of Selectmen.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else for Mr. Hunt on the mobile food vendor permit? If there's nothing else, we'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
Move to approve the mobile food vendor permit for Bullspit Brewing Company for Summer Drive as presented this evening.
Thank you. Made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. And then last up, we have the seven-day entertainment permit, also for Bullspit. No department heads. List of concert, dancing, perhaps a bouncing house, et cetera. Do you anticipate the need for any police details for any, anything?
Not in the immediate. I think if, once we get established down there and if we do host a bigger event, you know, we would obviously work with the police department on whether they felt we would need a detail.
Sure. Questions, comments from the Board?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
In the submission, I don't see any listing of times that this will be held. It just got the dates, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, but no time limits during the day. How long is it going to start and run to?
Yeah, so we, in, in the past, we've done, I think we did five to eight on Saturdays last year. We were, we were hoping to work with the police department to bump that to six to nine this year. And Sundays, we, we stick with our two to five, mid-afternoon type. And if we did something on Friday, and we don't have any immediate plans for that, it would fall in that same Saturday timeframe.
And then Sundays was two to five, you said?
Two to five, yeah.
Sundays. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Anything else from the Board?
I feel like six to nine even is still early. Like, people in the summertime especially, they like to stay out maybe till 10.
Yeah.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, we tried to be really conservative. Last year, everything was very last minute. We were only open September, October. So I didn't want to change too much from what we did uptown. So I just kept all the times the same. But yeah, in conversations and from feedback Liz got from our guests last year, five to eight was very early, and a lot of people were still at work or finishing up dinner after work, you know, and wanted to get down and see some music. So we're hoping that the police department doesn't have an issue with six to nine. Again, that's just another conversation. We need to broach with them.
Do we have to put a time limit on it, do you suppose, at this point?
I don't think we need, I don't think we're required to, no.
Because I feel like if we put a time limit, then you're stuck to that time. And then if you feel like there haven't been any complaints and you want to stay open till 10, I would rather give them that flexibility. Especially, you know, the hot summer days in July and August when the sun is all long dying.
Yeah, I'm personally okay without putting specific times for myself.
I'm okay with it, but I think we would get complaints from residents that, well, they can stay open till 11, and it's going to be noisy, and we're trying to sleep, so maybe we should just be kind and put a 10 on it. Do you have any desire to operate beyond 10?
Not really. No.
Unless you want it to be nine to get off the hook, maybe let's just propose 10.
We like to operate at least an hour after the music because it gives time to people to finish their food or their drink and instead of trying to mass exit everybody out in once, so it makes it a little bit safer. So we try to always stay open an hour after the music stops.
That's fair.
If we stop at nine, then we're closing at 10.
I think that's fair.
Yeah.
And I would also add that this is a little bit of a temporary solution because the long-term intention is to have a taproom there. And so I would envision that when that time comes, you know, when you wrap it up for the night, people can move inside and continue on for another hour or two or whenever they need to be cut off, without having to necessarily just pack it up and leave.
Right, yeah.
But correct me if I'm wrong, even after the building and you have your taproom, weren't you still kind of looking at some outdoor activities?
Yeah, the outdoors will be open. They're just, we would have that indoor option.
I think it's just good to, like, kind of feel it out, see if there's, there's complaints about noise, how timing and whatnot. But I would rather err on the side of 10.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Rather than earlier. I think that's too early.
So if we say, you know, just no later than 10:00 PM? Or we'll put nothing on there?
I like nothing but.
Okay. Outdoor music to be concluded by 10.
That's a good idea.
Outdoor. I said specifically outdoor, outdoor music. That way, when they're up and running inside, who cares?
And I feel like that's fair, and that way people, you know, if it's a good night.
That lets you still do, you know, end by nine if you want to end by nine, and, yeah. But you won't get slapped on the hand if it goes.
Especially if we, you know, there's always, when we bring in a bigger band, you know, nine o'clock sometimes is a hard cutoff, you know.
It is, and if people are having fun and enjoying it, I hate to be that. I don't want to be that guy.
Encore.
Yeah, encore, yeah.
I think, you know, valid points. I'm fine with no date. I think they, they showed. us last year that they're very, very conscientious about, you know, how the townspeople feel about things and the hours and the noise and such like that. I'm fine with, play it by, play it by ear, ha, 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 a little bit.
I feel like we need to give you every opportunity to be successful that we can and by limiting you too much, you know, we're encroaching on that, so.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
So, is that a motion, Mrs. Anderson?
Sure, I'll make that motion to approve the seven day entertainment permit for Bullspit Brewing. Is that good enough?
As presented?
As presented.
Thank you.
Second.
And we have a second. Mr. Ward, any further discussion? Seen and hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And we have one more thing with Bullspit. I'm sorry, let me skip. We have no Board Commission Committee Department report this evening. Seven point one, the draft lease agreement with the town of Winchon and Bullspit Brewing Company. Mr. Saltzback?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, as outlined in your packet and included with the memo, we go over a little bit over, I guess, timeline, what we're looking at overall for the project at Four Summer Drive. Part of the issue that, that we are running into, I think collectively, is that remediation is still ongoing. That did go out to bid. It came out about a hundred thousand over, so we have applied for an additional hundred thousand dollars to address that. But in order to get us between where we presently are and where we want to be, we need something kind of in between to bridge us. So, that's the intention of this short-term lease, is to just formalize a document that will allow Bullspit to continue operating there in such a way that will protect the interests of all parties involved. So, a copy of that has been included, a draft copy has been included in your packet this evening and we are just asking that the board kind of take a look at it on a preliminary level and we'll be bringing it back at your next upcoming Board of Selectmen meeting to finalize it, should you have any notes. So, we don't necessarily need feedback at this time, but we just wanted to make you all aware of what our intention is.
Thank you. So, there's no motion needed this evening?
Correct.
So, can I just ask, this lease is really just only for a year, correct?
Correct. And it will, ultimately, it will terminate when we officially turn the property over. It will dissolve.
At whatever point that happens within the year. Okay. Questions, comments from the board?
I just.
Mrs. LaPointe?
Sorry. I read through it quickly and I'm hoping that the fire department and, I don't remember who else it was, approves the outdoor warming devices. I think that was a really good attraction and I don't think you should get rid of them, so I'm hoping.
Yeah, we, we worked, we worked with the, the fire department on, on the processes for those.
Anything further on this this evening? Very good. All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Seven point two, set a fee schedule for a farmer series pouring license. My first question is, could someone please explain to me what a farmer series pouring license is? Would that be you, Mr. Saltzback?
I will turn this over to Mary. Thank you.
I just, farmer's pouring means that it's a brewery license in a sense where you're taking products from a farm. It is a newly sectioned license with the ABCC, newly as within the last five to 10 years. Our town does not have any pouring license. I did call a few towns that were comparable to us in the area to get a cost comparison as to what they've charged right now for a pouring license. Not every town has it. Not every town has a brewery, so I did list Littleton, Barry, Ashburnham, Sterling, and Westminster. I think those are the closest and the size comparison was pretty equivalent to ours. And then we also listed what we currently have for licenses, which is like the all-alcohol restaurant, beer and wine restaurant, all-alcohol package store, beer and wine package store, and then club all alcohol. So, with those comparisons, we took a look at it and in this particular case, they're gonna be doing all three. Some towns just have a wine pouring license, some have just malt, which would be IPA, or the distillery. So, in this case, Bullspit plans on doing all three. So, we have to license them individually. So, we took a look at it and our recommendation was three fifty per license. That might be combined license later on through the ABCC and that would be like a year or two and then we can revisit it at that time, or we could just charge them the thousand dollars.
So, I know there are, you know, pubs and, and clubs in town that have a pouring license. That's considered, that would be considered the club all alcohol license?
Yes, that's correct. If they serve all alcohol, then it's just a regular.
But because this is a brewery and they make their own, it's considered a farmer's series pouring license?
Yes, yep.
Okay. So, Mrs. Anderson?
Yeah, I'm still robbing. They grow their own hops and stuff? Is that what you're telling me?
I think they, they have a farm in, I think they, I'm not sure why they didn't say, but they have a farm in Vermont, I believe, so they take some of the product down from there. So, it's pretty broad based through the ABCC's eyes. They don't necessarily have to grow it themselves anymore. At first, they did. Now, they can purchase it from local farmers and whatnot to, you know, like blueberries from local farms to, to make a blueberry wine or a blueberry beer, so they can do that under this farmer's pours license, which you can see in some cases are much cheaper than your regular typical packaged store or, or club or.
Right.
I feel like if you times it by three, though, it's more expensive.
Yeah, in this case, because they're looking for all three. Some towns just, you know, somebody's doing a wine pouring, somebody's just doing an IPA pouring, or somebody's just doing spirits. In Bullspit's case, they're doing all three, so ABC reckon, recognizes them as individual licenses.
And then, and the all alcohol pouring is a thousand. So, if you put the three together, you're at ten, ten fifty. And it could be the case of someone else brings in a winery and the only one that they would want would be the, the wine pouring.
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay.
And I believe Barry has a few of those that are just wine. Ashburnham is just wine. I mean, the cost is up to you. That was just a recommendation that we felt was fair. And again, it might, it's subject to change with the ABCC and that next year they might can combine, do a combination of all three, but that would be up to the ABCC.
Sure.
And would they limit the number of farmer's permits that we would be allowed to give?
They'll have a quota on that as well.
Thank you. That was another thought I had, yeah. Okay. Do we know what that number is?
I believe our quota was six, but I'll have to double check on that.
Okay. Six total for farmer pouring or six malt, six wine, six distillery?
No, I believe six total.
Six total for any license under the farmer's series. Okay. Mr. Ward?
Yeah, quick question. Do we have any, anyone in town, any farm in town willing to do this at this point? I don't know of any. I'm just curious.
Well, no. I mean, it's usually not necessarily like Bullspit's a brewery, so they're doing the farmer's pouring license, but they may buy product from a local farm. I know that's what they did in Ashburnham. They bought blueberries from a local farm, a blueberry farm in Ash, Ashburnham and did the pouring license and at their facility. So, the same here, but I, I don't know of any farms in this area that would want to do it at this point. Usually it's a, usually starts with a IPA or a wine and add their product in.
Looking at the twenty, because this was effective July 11, 2013, and looking back at, it says, this is a license to sell and allow samplings of the alcoholic beverages it manufactures on its premises. So, it can't be, you take something from a farm and you sell it in your store. This is for, the, the person who has the license is the one that actually manufactures this on their premises.
Yes, correct.
So, like a farm?
Yeah, you, you can't go and buy wine from someplace else and then bring it in and sell it under this. You would have to make it yourself. Yeah. Okay.
How about this? Can you sell what you make, like in, in the take home?
They do. I believe they allow bottles to be sold, but to be drank off premise.
Yeah, off premise drinking for that.
So, it would just be the pouring license would just be like samples, like an IPA sample or a wine sample or a distiller, spirits.
Okay. Anything further from the board? If there's nothing else, entertain a motion.
Ma'am Chair.
Mr. Ward.
I move the Board of Selectmen set the fees for the farmer series pouring licenses for malt wines and distillery to be three hundred fifty dollars each annually.
Second. Now, you know, the notice here that when a license is first issued, if the fees are a hundred dollars, we prorate it annually. Do we know when they will be looking to?
They're looking, once they get past this common vic and they're submitting their, they need to have a, the lease in hand and they're gonna submit with the ABCC. The ABCC can take anywhere for about a month or so, but usually they kind of turn it around within a month, so it'd probably, my guess would be probably June.
So, these are the annual fees and it'll be prorated, whatever they pay will be prorated based on when they start?
Correct.
Okay. Made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. This is cool stuff, something new, something different.
Yeah, it is.
I'm not a teetotaler, but it's still exciting. All right, seven point three, accept donations for the recreation department. Ms. Newton, how are you this evening?
I'm great. How are you?
Good, thanks. So, what do we have this evening?
So, we've received two more sponsorships for the grand opening, each platinum level, so total of a thousand dollars. And we have stopped collecting sponsorships for this to give us some time to get all stuff printed that we need to, that goes along with that signs and things of that nature. We did have one more small donation come in today, but it wasn't enough time to get it on here, agenda, so we'll throw that up there later. But that's about it. Currently, our donations total, ten thousand four hundred and fifty dollars for the grand opening, which is wonderful. And we'll be able to cover all of our costs that we've planned out, we want to do, so, yeah, so that's great. And, oh, I'm so sorry. I was wrong. There was four sponsorships, all five hundred for two thousand, as I was seeing scroll. I'm so sorry.
And that's LaPointe Law Offices, Not Just Produce, Matthew Ford, and Athol Savings at five hundred each. Okay. And some previous donations, Palstone and Gravel and GFA.
Yes, they also donated.
Very good.
And then I wanted to bring before you, seeing we had stopped sponsorships for the grand opening. I know at different times, we've mentioned possibly accepting sponsorships for future things. So, this is a packet that I put together that I'd like to move forward with in terms of some sponsorships for this upcoming year. There's a lot of information in here and you guys can have the electronic version and we can send that out too and everything. And what we'd be asking for in this is, the very last page talks about what kinds of sponsorships we'd be looking for. And so, that would look like, we'd like to ask for two sponsorships for the amphitheater at a thousand dollars, which we're hoping to use towards some free performances there for people. We have a list of free performances, but we'd like to kind of ramp that up a little bit, so that would help in terms of funding them. We have our community days, which three of them went before you for an entertainment permit already and we have more planned. And so, we'd be asking for six sponsorships for those at five hundred dollars each. And then, we are planning to host a six week series of movie nights at the amphitheater and we are looking for six sponsors for that at three hundred dollars each, which will go towards the licensing fees for the movies themselves.
Very good. Now, is there, if it was in the plans, I don't recall, will there be a movie screen that comes down?
There is, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, that's in the works. So, it'll be a big screen that pulls down for the amphitheater and then everyone can sit in the tiers, just like they would for any other event that we had there.
Nice, okay. Questions, comments from the board?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. LaPointe.
Just looking at the generosity of the community in sponsoring the grand opening, I guess I'm wondering if we should limit the amount of sponsorships available for the amphitheater or if we should kind of try to capitalize on that ongoing generosity if we could, especially since we're trying to make it self-sustaining and fund the salary lines and stuff like that. So, just a thought. I'm sure you guys have thought of it, but,
Well, I do want to mention that I did try and make the tiers as reasonable as possible and limit them, like, for the free performances, only to two or only to six, because that's the number of events we have. And some of that goes on to, people really want to see the free events happen and we have such a limited budget that some of these, we still want to do some of these, like, we want to do the movie nights and we'll do them, but we'll have to charge a different amount if we don't get sponsors and we don't want people to be upset about that.
Yeah, but so what I'm saying is, why not let more businesses sponsor if they're willing as opposed to capping it?
Oh, oh, I thought you were saying, I'm so sorry. I was thinking you were saying the opposite.
And if I could just maybe add something to that as well, just to highlight for the event schedule we have here so far, running from April through to October, there's fifteen events that are free on there and of the ones that aren't free, many of them are five dollars. And I think just taking a look at some of the feedback we received from the community initially, especially when the, the, you know, at, at-cost concerts were posted and there was a little bit of a panic from folks saying, I thought this was supposed to be a community park, but now we have to pay. There are certain events, there are expenses that are associated with those events. And I think the important piece to remember is that as an organization, we were charged with the, the task of trying to run this park at no cost to the taxpayer. And I'd also like to highlight that beyond the generosity of the Robinson Broadhurst Foundation, who's currently funding Mrs. Newton's role, who's doing an excellent job, by the way, and I think, I mean, this packet really shows what she's been working on. On the town side, we budget towards recreation, four thousand dollars a year. I think just to maybe open some people's eyes, four thousand dollars a year in 2023 does not really get you much. And if you look at the amount that the, the Recreation Committee slash Parks and Rec Commission is presently doing between the work of Tiffany and the volunteers on that committee, I think, you know, as a community, how grateful we are for the work they put in because the only way you can stretch four thousand dollars that far is from their hard work. So, I applaud all of them as well.
Absolutely.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Anderson.
Can I just say that, that I do appreciate the fact that when, when, that you use Facebook and Instagram? Like, one of my pet peeves is we sit up here and talk about social media all the time and, and we use Facebook. Just say it, you know, that you, you're branching out and that's so important because younger people don't use Facebook.
I have noticed that and I'm still getting better at using Instagram. We've created them. I share on them, but not as regularly as Facebook because, again, I'm getting used to that. I did not have it in Instagram until I had to get one for this, so that's been a little bit of a challenge for me. But I mean, in general, social media, we've been flyering and we, we're in the Johnny Appleseed. They've posted every activity that we have all summer long in there. We have an ad for the amphitheater and the grand opening in there and they wrote an article about it too. But even on social media, we've been being shared by much larger activity groups, like the Macaroni Kid out of Lumenter and just recently today, there is another group that's something about visit Massachusetts with things to do that shared our free amphitheater lineup for the summer just today and they had about twenty thousand followers on their page. So, that's like a huge boost for us to get people to know that we're here and we're doing things, so.
Very good. Anything further from the board? I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
And I'm going to read the names again, because I think they deserve recognition. I move to accept the two thousand dollar donations, five hundred dollars each, from La Pointe Law Offices, Not Just Produce, Matthew Ford, Athol Savings Bank, and to recognize the previous five hundred dollar each donations from Powell Stone and Gravel and GFA Credit Union.
Second. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, Old Business eight point one, Fire Station Working Group Candidate Review and Selection. Mr. Saltzback.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you may recall, your March, that date is wrong, today's the March twenty-seventh Board of Selectmen meeting. At your previous Board of Selectmen meeting, baby brain, at your previous Board of Selectmen meeting, it included the conversation about the formation of a fire department design working group, and that group would be comprised of one member of the Board of Selectmen, who we now know as Selectwoman La Pointe, one member of the Finance Committee, James Reed, Winchton Fire Department Member, who I, Marty Scott, yes, thank you, Marty Scott, and Police Chief, join us, by the way, thank you, and two citizen seats to be appointed. So we did advertise for that vacancy for two citizen seats, we did receive some feedback, so there were three responses. They are attached to this memo. And once those two elements are finalized, that group's first item of business will be to work with the Chief and I to develop an RFP for OPM services for the project, as well as just a general overview of how far the project has come so far. So, and Chief, I don't know if there's anything you'd like to add to that?
No, basically, just the, looking to recommend two of the, fill those two positions out of these three. We got definitely some qualified candidates showing interest, and it's nice to see some different names coming out that are interested in doing things throughout the community, so. Do you want to go over which one you'd like to recommend, or do you want to go through them, or?
Well, we, so we have three names. The first is Samantha Harding.
Just to give a brief, as you're going through, Samantha's a engineer who's worked, has worked, I believe she's an electrical engineering consultant. She has worked on fire stations in other communities, as far as reviewing and that. I think she'd be an excellent addition to the working group, someone that's familiar with being able to review some of the things that those of us may not have the experience in electrical engineering, and make sure that things are on point as far as what's coming in to the OPM.
And then Philip Brady.
Uh, Philip is a firefighter, has worked on, he lives here in Winchton, they all do, lives here in Winchton. He is somebody that's worked in a number of, couple of different departments, he's seen different, a lot of different stations. I think that he would be someone that, with his background, as well as being a retired Air Force Sergeant, I think he's approached us and wants to step up and start doing something here for his community, and I, again, I think he would be an excellent candidate also.
And he is not a member of our department?
No, he is not a member of our fire department.
Okay, thank you. And then Rick Carpenter.
Uh, Rick has lived in Winchton for all his life, I believe. He has been involved in public safety. He was a member of the Winchton Fire Department from seventy-nine to ninety-nine. Again, as far as with the three, I'm sure he'd be an excellent choice. We did, however, talking with Justin and myself, the possibility of how it appears to have somebody that is, was currently on the department, we did try to kind of not want to have everybody that's directly connected with that station. Again, it's certainly nothing against him, it's more something with how things look as far as the member, if it's a member that was on the department and that, so we did want to just kind of approach that in that method, where the other two don't have involvement with the fire department at all, as far as that goes with ours.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Anderson.
Could I just say, I'll throw it away on that, that these are three basically new names to us, and I'm so happy to see that, that new people are willing to step up. Very grateful.
I agree with that, and I think Finance also pointed out that they were very happy to have somebody new that was very interested in working on the project, which I've reached out to him and tried to start bringing people into the fold, I think it's great.
Anything further from the board?
Are we able to expand it to three citizen seats?
Do we have three citizens? But I do want to stand, you know, with, with Mr. Carpenter.
We just left him a direct aspect, that that would be a little bit.
Yeah. But I do appreciate that he offered.
Absolutely, and I will be, if, if the board goes with the first two, I will be reaching out to all three of them. I don't think just reaching out to the two that get the position will be the appropriate thing, so I will reach out to all three.
Thank you. So Chief, your recommendations are Samantha Harding and Philip Brady?
Yes.
For the two citizen seats. Okay, thank you. And Philip. Anything further from the board?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Anderson.
With our thanks, I would like to make a motion to recommend Samantha Harding and Philip Brady to the Fire Station Working Group.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? And I will second and third and fourth it, thank you to all the applicants. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Eight point two, we have an Old Murdoch Project Schedule update. Mr. Town Manager, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, as you're all aware, we have a lot going on in town, and so I'm trying to make a push to regularly update this board and the community on some of the high-profile projects we have that are ongoing. So, just as a general update on the Old Murdoch Project Schedule, that Phase One bid documents are currently out, they're publicly out. They were released on March twenty-second, and sealed bids are back on Thursday, April sixth, at two P M. I did want to highlight that there's going to be a pre-bid site walk held tomorrow, Tuesday, March twenty-eighth, at ten A M., so if anybody from the public or this board would like to attend, we will be there. Andy Barr, who is our architect from Russo Barr Associates, will be joining you at your upcoming April tenth Board of Selectmen meeting to review the bid responses. Hopefully, we'll have a low-qualified bid in hand at that time, and he will walk you all through the nitty-gritty of the scope of work that we're going to be doing in Phase One. We don't have a set schedule on construction yet, because it's partly dependent on the selected low bidders availability, also the availability of materials and any other staging requirements. So, we are, with that said, anticipating work to begin as early as May, but no later than June, and to be wrapped up before we go into the winter. I also did include in your packet just a breakdown of the Project One drawings and Project One manual, that kind of highlights some of the particulars of what we're looking to address. Ultimately, it's going to be about just shy of a million dollars in construction costs, repairs, the remainder is spent on soft costs, so that includes the OPM, the architect, all these drawings and bid documents, as well as the temporary repairs that we did in late fall, early winter of last year. So they have sketched out the structure, they have highlighted areas where they're calling for repointing. You can see where there are areas of masonry that is loose, and then specifically areas where there is actually missing masonry, so, depending on which direction you're looking. So this elevation in particular, for example, is if you're, the side entrance, where you typically would walk into the Council on Aging, is the view that you're looking at right now. You can see on the front here where the missing masonry is, where it's sheared off, that's currently covered with a wrap. Damaged areas are highlighted sporadically throughout. And now you're looking with, Toy Town is at your back, basically. And that's the backside. So what the, the scope of this particular phase is going to cover is a lot of the higher up, more, I would say, more difficult work. What will follow after is some more substantial replacement of the slate roof. In the last phase is going to be window replacement. It may not be an actual full-blown, like, take all the windows out, but it could be the installation of storm windows or something like that on the exterior to help cut down, so you'd save on energy costs as well. But that's something that they'll be developing out in the next year or two. Are there any questions?
I do. Mrs. Anderson.
Are we still looking for grants and some outside funding sources to store this building?
Actively, but there's, there's, it's slim pickings for this type of project, so, and not to mention the other initiatives that we're actively writing and applying for, for grants. So Robinson Broadhurst is a group that we'll continue to partner with. Outside of them, there is a lot. So if you look at the Mass Historic Preservation Fund, for example, they typically cap their construction grants at fifty thousand dollars. You know, I'll always take free money if the opportunity's there, but I just, I just want to kind of stress to this board, into the community, that there isn't some, you know, magic knight that's going to ride in and drop a bag of money on our laps. And I think a big part of this also is that you're going to have to look at creative ways to fund this. You know, the community did explore, but unfortunately voted down the Community Preservation Act, which would have been a good source of funding. And we'll have to continue looking to try to find other creative ways, just to try to, I guess, financially facilitate some of these initiatives.
But correct me if I'm wrong, the Community Preservation Act would have taken twenty years, twenty years. That building doesn't have twenty years.
No, no, that's correct, but in the first year, by example, not to belabor the point, but if you brought in five hundred thousand dollars, and if you funded the other categories at minimum of ten percent, in one year, you could have had a two hundred thousand dollar appropriation or more to offset the cost of that project from the state's side alone. It would be about four hundred thousand if you included the contribution from the citizens of Winchton.
So I, I think your point is, keep digging, dig as deep as you can, wherever you can, please.
We continue to dig.
For, for help on this, yes. So is the, okay, so just looking ahead, you know, when we get to the third phase, replace or, or insulate some of the windows somehow, how's the building structure, you know, the building itself?
So structurally, it is, it is a rock-solid building. That is, by all accounts, that's what we've heard. And I, I think it's slightly deceiving, we actually had one gentleman call about a year ago in a panic, when the tarp had blown off, and he saw the structure underneath, and he was of the impression that the entire tower was going to fall off. The, the substructure is fine, you know, within reason. It's a, it's a very old building, but it's strong. What people are seeing fall off is the facade, it's decorative, it effectively hangs on to the structure. So I think that's important to highlight. But we'll, we'll continue to look at the building. It has come up in some conversations about the possibility of doing, you know, I think, some type of building survey to maybe try to identify the best, you know, best future use. Obviously, it's the home of the Council on Aging, but I think making this type of investment in that structure, I think inevitably that's a conversation that comes up, so I would anticipate that to, you know, maybe come forward shortly.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the board? All right, thank you very much for that report. Speaking of which, at your convenience, Mrs. Saltzback, the Town Manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So it's a brief report, just a couple of things worth highlighting. The fiscal twenty-four budget is nearing completion. As of about an hour ago, actually, we officially balanced down to the dollar, so we've made some good progress there. And it's also worth noting that we're three-quarters of the way through the fiscal year twenty-three budget, so we're actively monitoring those lines. As we've highlighted throughout the year, we have had some turnover and personnel turbulence, so some of those salary lines are going to be going over. We continue to monitor and communicate with the Finance Committee just to keep an eye on that. Some of that's just reflective of the cost of overlap, some of it's having to pay consultants to kind of bridge us in between, and I'd say another portion is where we budgeted, you know, one, one figure, for example, say eighty thousand dollars for the accountant, but then ended up having to pay about ninety for, for the one we ended up landing. So little, little things like that worth keeping an eye on. But aside from the personnel items, all our other expenses are in check, and we are confident that there'll be enough lines in our budget that we've been monitoring pretty conservatively, that we'll be able to slide over money and cover some of those lines that have gone over. On the personnel side of things, Kaylee Gavin's going to be joining us as the Assistant Treasurer/Collector, which means that all Town Hall vacancies are full at this time, with the exception, obviously, of the, the Planning and Economic Development Director, but we were addressing that through the budget. On the project update side of things, we are going through the necessary Conservation Commission procedures to initiate the demolition of the Beach Street Garage. Thank you to Mr. Crotto for the work that he's been putting into that, and we're on track for our goal to have that structure down in the early spring. Realistically, it would be pulling it down to the foundation, and then potentially addressing the foundation itself with grant funds, or doing that work in-house, but charging it back to the cost of the project, so we'll see how that goes. Punchless items are being reviewed for the amphitheater at the Winchton Community Park as things start to thaw out a little bit. June tenth, the grand opening is right around the corner, so we'll be hitting the ground running on that this spring. The library project is in its final stages with the, as, as some members of the community will tell you, the paint phase has kicked off. We had to have an early closure one day, just because of the fumes, but that's moving along. We've narrowed down contractors for the Town Hall copula restoration. I actually had a local team out on the roof with me today, taking a look at it. The timeline, once again, is partly dependent on the qualified contractor's availability, as well as the availability of materials, but that is moving forward. And we continue to monitor responses from the state regarding the water main funding. Believe me, it's very much still on our mind, so we keep, we keep checking in, and we'll see what happens. From there, once they make a determination, that, that outcome is really going to define, I think, how we map out the rest of the way we plan on funding that project. Just as a refresher, we have applied to the state for a low-interest loan, as well as some forgiveness, but we've also applied to the Robinson Broadhurst Foundation, trying to pick up a portion. We've been working pretty closely with our, our State House delegation to identify other sources, and then whatever remainder ends up being there is a figure that we're going to have to try to build into our debt schedule on the town side, but also potentially into, you know, a number to be determined, but the upcoming rate increase discussion on water and sewer for future years, and part of the conversation being how much of that should be on the town side, how much of that should be on the water side. But it's ongoing. And then I'd say in terms of the, the overall project cost, once again, as a reminder, we're actively looking for ways to value-engineer that project, meaning rein in the actual construction costs, so we're very much on top of it. And then on the miscellaneous side of things, the final draft of the fiscal twenty-four budget will be reviewed in a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee this upcoming Thursday, March thirtieth. Deb has been working diligently on getting the tabs in, on the binders, and having everything ready, so we expect to be able to distribute that to this board and to the Finance Committee by tomorrow evening. We'll drop some copies off at dispatch, so, and we'll leave your copies at Town Hall.
Thank you.
That is everything for now.
If you refresh the collective memory, perhaps, please, the Beach Street, the, the house, I know that, I believe it was sold, correct?
So we had, we had a purchase and sale agreement, that individual's financing fell through. Since then, we have entered into a new purchase and sales agreement. I believe the final purchase price was about a hundred fifteen, a hundred twenty thousand dollars, so that's still being finalized, and we'll, you know, I'd say probably another week or two, we'll have an official determination.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments for the Town Manager on his report?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
So this is, just checking, the State So this is, just checking, the state's COVID open meeting law, which allows Zoom meetings, expires this Friday. And being on the monitor's Regional Planning Commission, I know our meeting in April, unless we hear from the state, otherwise we'll be in person in Pittsburgh. Do you have any more information on that?
I, I have not heard anything. I've heard rumblings, obviously, but I haven't heard an official determination. So the way it is right now is if, I believe it's if you have a majority of the body physically present, right? There can be remote or hybrid participation. But I would, I would anticipate for now to plan for that, to change and revert back to what it was pre-COVID. That said, I wouldn't be surprised if they swooped in with a last-minute extension because that's historically what they've done.
Yeah, I know they're talking maybe going to 2025 right now. But if they don't, the only reason I point that out is just about all of our committees meet in person now, except we do have the Historic Commission, which consistently meets Zoom. Just a heads up that they won't be able to meet next month.
I'll, I'll give them a reminder.
Unless we get a change from the state.
Oh, wait a minute. I'm sorry, Barbara?
No, I do. I'm, I'm just looking it up and it is March 31st.
Okay.
Oh, 2025.
Is that the proposed?
Yep.
Okay. Anything further, Madam, Mrs. Saltzback? Thank you very much.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just do have an update from Mr. Crotto in regards to Mr. Ward's question in regards to 5.1 Camelot. Any water and sewer bills that were less, more than six months old were leaned to real estate. So that they're part of that $13,500.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we do have two sets of minutes. Let me switch screens here. The first... Give me a moment here to... Are you on February 27th, Mrs. Saltzback? Make sure we're on the same page, literally and figuratively. Okay. February 27th, 2023, this was a regular meeting. Any comments, corrections, notations? If, if, if none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
Move to approve the Board of Selectmen regular meeting minutes of February 27th, 2023, as presented this evening.
Second. Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And then we have the minutes, the shortman, of the meeting, the meeting we had on March 13th, 2023, just prior to the special town meeting. Questions, comments, or motion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
Move to approve the Board of Selectmen meetings held prior to the special town meeting, the minutes of that night for March 13th, 2023, as presented this evening.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I will abstain.
Thank you. One abstention. Thank you. That's it for minutes. We do have executive session. I move that the board goes, go into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, fire chief contract, and to reconvene in open session for the sole purpose of adjournment. So I'm moved.
Second.
Actually, I made the motion. I made it as a motion. Thank you. Made and seconded. Roll call vote, Mr. Ward.
Aye.
Mrs. LaPointe.
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We are in executive session at 7:45.